I think I'm a minute late. It's 9:01 and I'm going to call this special meeting to order. The Board of Directors of the Fort Clark Springs Association, excuse me, will establish a quorum. We have, normally have five members. We have four here today. One is out of town. So we have a quorum. Now if we'll all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
That wasn't too bad. Oh, I'm sorry. If we can stay standing here, I'm sorry, we can have a moment of silence. Thank you. Thank you. Before we begin, I'd just like to welcome our latest, our newest director, John Wiley, to the board.
Thank you.
All right. Our first agenda item is the variance in Unit 25, Lot 28. Has everybody had a chance? I know we've been working on this for quite a few months. Would anybody like to start off with any questions or concerns, or are they about the variance?
The driveway. That's my biggest concern.
The driveway.
With the placement of the driveway.
Okay. Well, let me go ahead and read. Let's see, the variance is...
Francis.
I just lost my mind. They're looking to approach in the setback, in the back of the property, for about five feet from the roof line and about, well, it's about five, six feet and then two or three feet for part of the prop, the house. The living space for that unit is 1,500 square feet and we're looking at 1,376. And they are looking to use a horizontal hardy plank siding, which is not in the CCNRs for that unit. And they also want to enter off the property off of Pecan instead of through Oak Lane. A little background is there is a huge 100-year-old tree on that property. It's a very, it's a very odd property and one of the last in the Oaks, or it is the last. And in order to fit in the house, the driveway and everything and not damage and keep the tree, that's the reason for all of the variances. And one of the concerns is off of, coming off of Pecan, it's a, it's a small road. It's got, it's, lost the word.
Edges?
It's asphalt and the edges coming up and off of that could, could cause wear. But, you know, I don't know how long, you know, that would be before it started crumbling that edge. That's a concern. I mean, I think that's the biggest concern.
Mr. Kendall, is the house facing the Oaks? Is that going to be the front of the house? It's going to look like the front of a house?
Yes.
And there's going to be a driveway in front of the house?
We'll do the 20-foot that's required, but not anything past that. Because that would, if we put in a concrete driveway, it would be completely over the roots of that oak tree.
So, so you're basically making a parking?
Yes.
Parking space? Because that's another concern. You can't park along the back of Pecan if that's where the driveway is.
Is the house going to be 1,500 square feet, or is it, you're asking for less than 1,500 square feet?
1,380. 2,200 under roof.
Okay, 2,200 under roof. But the living will be 13-something?
13.
Yeah, so the living space is less than the...
It's a small lot, though. I mean, you know.
It's an odd lot, yes. And you're preserving the neat wall?
Yes.
On the back there, if anybody's picking Pecan.
Robert, how long is the driveway in the back, the gravel driveway?
Probably, I don't remember exactly, 20 foot, 25.
And you're, the back driver, you're looking to do it in, I don't know where it says, in gravel?
That's, we could do gravel or concrete, whatever people would prefer. That's fine with us.
Well, I don't, I don't know about roads, you know, if we consider that is, how does that match up to the asphalt? Does anybody?
Well, they just saw cut the asphalt and then you pour the concrete right up to it. And that's...
I would prefer the concrete.
Either that or you have numerous ones back there with gravel.
I'm sorry?
There are any roads back there with gravel.
But it's not their main entrance. It's dual-lane, yeah, RVs and, because I don't think there's a single one there with a variance for a driveway in the back. There are people just doing that.
Is there a reason you went with cement board instead of stucco or brick or rock?
That's just what we prefer.
Well, I did go looking through the property and I don't know how many of them are hardy plank, but it is plank. There are five houses in there that are only plank without, without any rock. And then there are other ones in there with either cedar or, or hardy board and rocks. So, so the variance would be that there would be no rock and it would, the specific brand would be hardy plank. Does anybody else have questions?
I would have, my preference would be that you do a concrete driveway in the back. He's going to put...
I would second that.
Is there anyone that's right here?
Yes, ma'am. Yep. Doing, doing concrete out back here. And that way it's not gravel and it's still...
And then gravel back here?
No, he's, he's going to do concrete up here. He's just not going to go over the roots of the tree.
Yeah, I understand. Is there anybody from...
Just basically...
Yes.
Your variance, I believe, is the driveway and has nothing to do with the house, correct? Or is the variance also approaching green space?
In the back it is, I believe.
Okay.
I don't, I don't have the plat, so I don't know.
Because I believe where his driveway is going over is green space, correct?
Well, it's setback. Has it, the property line...
It goes to the green space.
It goes to the green space.
But you're, really, your question is the driveway isn't, has nothing to do with the building of the house. His house complies with...
Other than it is smaller, technically square footage.
Well, but it's under, you've got, it's under...
Correct. 2,200.
Yeah, so you're fine there.
On this diagram, Robert, it doesn't show your driveway exceeding the plat that you have described on this plot, right?
Well, that was because, and the initial thought was gravel. But, I mean, we're fine doing concrete up to Pecan.
Well, you have a very good point. I don't know that I'd be comfortable saying to build something into green space without having, being able to see that on a piece of paper, how much encroachment there is. If we're talking three feet, I don't see an issue, but if we're talking, but you said the whole thing's 20-foot total out to the road?
Roughly. From Pecan to the property line, probably 10-foot, 10-foot to the green space.
10-foot to the property line.
You've got a scale on here? 3/16 equals one foot. I don't, correct. No, I can do this right here.
I don't want to drag you to do whatever you have to do to save the tree.
Where's the driveway now?
Driveway's right here.
The store's in the front.
This is your, he's not going to go across the tree, but, so he'll have a driveway up here, but this is what we're talking about, it's back here to the end of the property.
This is, this is in the Oaks.
Yeah.
But, no, this is again, where the creek is, Pecan, behind the Oaks. Yeah, okay.
So I got close to 30 feet to the property line from here, from here to here. This would be his threshold on his driveway, or his garage, and this would be the end of the property line, it's about 30 feet.
Yeah, and this is 20, and then this is the green space.
But my question is, is that...
No. You said about 10 feet from your property line to the edge of the road.
Yeah, probably 10 or 12 feet.
Okay, so we're looking at 40-foot driveway roughly.
But in the green space, 10 to 12.
10 to 12.
I don't see the measurements on here for the width of the driveway.
Uh, I don't know if we put that or not. I mean, just a normal...
Well, his garage door is 22 by 20.
So it won't be, it'll be a one, basically a one, we're not doing a two-car-wide driveway. We'll have one and then wide at the opening of the driveway.
The neighbors are all on board with this question. Any, the three we're spoken to and they're on board and then...
We've got something in writing.
From them. And then there is a couple more that were also, is, and we can, is there people here from Unit 25 that would like to, you know, say whether you have, you know, have questions or concerns about it?
I don't live there, but I have two quick questions. How many empty lots are left in that new unit?
That's it.
I think that's it.
That's it, okay. And my only concern is it's, we'll have another one. Not sure why I missed, why this gentleman wanted to have the driveway come from Pecan, right, and out the other road. And then the other one is, I just hope we don't start setting up precedent and people can change things that all live there and say, well, let's just start another one. That's my only two concerns. Thank you.
No, and that's a legitimate concern. The major reason for this one is that there is a, over 100-year-old oak tree in there and there's concerns, the architect has said there's concerns with, if they come in from Oak Lane, it's going to disturb the root ball.
Well, we could look at it as though if we did not grant the variance for the gravel driveway and they have to re, you know, basically flip their garage and then they have to bring their driveway over the tree and it kills the tree, I think the argument could be made that, is that worse than doing 10-foot by 20-foot over green space? Because we, if we lose that tree, I think most municipalities, HOAs, that's a pretty serious deal, you know, lose a tree that, that big.
No.
So, either way, we're taking a risk with green space.
Well, and we have in the past, which, you know, doesn't make a precedent, the owner pays the taxes for the variant, you know, for the piece of property that they're approaching into the common, common space, the property tax on it. Who calculates that? The tax office or us?
200 square feet.
Yeah, maybe just take the 200 square feet and then...
Talk to him, we'll go do the job.
Well, I know issues, it's maybe a concrete gravel.
Thanks, Mr. Peterson. Do you have an opinion?
Just a question.
Yes, sir.
I don't live in Unit 25 either, but from what I understand, most CCNRs, you cannot put a permanent structure on green space. So, the driveway would be, if it's cement in the back, there'll be 10 feet on green space, which would make it permanent. Is that, is that going to become part of the variance then?
Well, he did say he'd be willing to do gravel, didn't he?
Yeah, I mean, he could do, he would do cement on his own property. If the property line has to go at 10 feet, if you've got a lot of permanent structure, that would become gravel, which would be, can be removable if it happens to be. That was being out of my own thought.
Well, in the original, let's see, when you, when you connect your driveway to the road and, in the normal setting, you are still going into green space. Like my, my house, there's probably three foot that's before the road from my property line, but I'm allowed to put my driveway. Now, I don't know if that makes a difference because, you know, it's, it's the entrance, it's the, you know, the front of the home. Whether, you know, flipping that to the back, I mean...
I'm just asking the question.
Most houses on the fort, most houses on the fort, their driveway extends all the way to the road and there's like three or four feet that are green space.
Depending on the unit.
Easement.
Easement.
It's a roadway, utilities, man.
Oh, okay.
I'm just saying, I'm not arguing the point, I'm just asking.
Go ahead, Francis.
Everyone on one side of Baylor has concrete driveways going across the green space, for example.
Yes.
Linda's, the Lewis's, Bill says his isn't permanent, I can't speak to that. Mary's and York's, they all have concrete driveways going across green space to the road.
Thankfully it's not green space, it's a parking lot.
No.
Look at the map.
Not, not over there, yeah. It's a parking lot, yeah. Different, different, unit different, yeah.
I think in, with regards to the tree being threatened, that not putting the driveway in the back is a bad idea. If we put it in the front and the tree dies, nobody wants that, I would suppose, so, you know, paint concrete, even if it goes across a little green space and work out the tax details.
Same, do you have a question?
Oh, go ahead, same.
If you go and read stuff from a couple of decades ago up through, the main concern about variances and the reason that it was added to the declarations, that the board had to approve the variances, is the, you did it for this guy, now you have to do it for me. So you have to be really careful that the reasons for doing it are documented, because the next person comes along and says, well, you did it for Mr. Jones, why aren't you doing it for me, Mr. Smith? So you have to make sure that that's not an issue in the future. And, like, again, that's why it was incorporated, so that the board made that decision, because that's why we have all these sheds, driveways, hangers without a house in the past, so.
Yeah, that's a great point, and that's why the first question I asked, Robert, is why? And his answer is the tree. And I think, we don't live in a community that's an HOA, you know, that's like San Antonio or something like that, where it's just restrictions to the 10th degree. So I think, as long as somebody came to the board and said, hey, this is why, and it obviously makes sense for the best interest of the fort, to have that tree there in the best interest of everybody around, yeah, if there's a good reason why, that's what we're here for, right?
Right. And I love the tree and I love the wall.
Yeah.
That's why I make sure, this is something you will run into in the future, I guarantee it, so it has to be well documented.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
One might keep in mind that the crown of the tree is just about equal to the root system, keeping that in mind.
That's exactly the problem. The, the crown of the tree literally takes up the entire front part of the whole property, so any of their driveway is going to encroach under the crown of the tree, so...
It's a, it's a huge canopy. A lot of weight will kill it. I think, I've seen it, okay. Does anyone, are we prepared to make a motion?
With the concrete?
With the concrete, yes.
Okay. I'll make a motion.
Well, we need to be specific as to what the variance, you know, more than just that.
Just like these?
Well, that, we need to look, we, that we'll have to set aside or find the, the square foot for the tax.
Okay.
That needs to be in the motion.
Do you have a question?
Yes, sir.
So, I keep hearing about green space. I want to make sure that we've got the right definitions, because I have a whole bunch of property behind my house that is green space, it belongs to the fort, they pay taxes on it. I also have an easement that my driveway crosses at the front of the house that isn't, that's, it's my property, but there's an easement for the fort. So, does that property go up to green space and then crosses to the road? Or are we talking about the easement from the road to the property line? I think that's different to green space and I would be very careful with your definitions. I don't know if there's a tax liability here.
Well, what, what's in front of your property is roadway.
Right.
Yeah.
Also on the backside, are we talking roadway or actually green space that the fort pays taxes on? I don't think that's the case for Pecan. Most of those lots on the back look like they come up, there's a, there's a line and then there's the road, right? And I think their property line is on the back, but because they don't have a driveway, their property line ends at the, at the roadway. So are we talking roadway easement or are we talking green space?
I mean, it's...
I think you guys need, that needs to be something that is known.
It's going to fall into common property, it has to, I mean, it's, there's, there can be no other definition of it.
Because I don't think there's any utilities back there.
No, there is, there's nothing back there. It's too close to the creek, I mean, all of Pecan runs, it, almost in a floodplain.
So we need a motion that, if, if somebody wants to make a motion that, that is specific.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we approve the variance with a documented square footage of the encroachment within the common property and that the driveway is constructed of concrete to be met with the minimum requirements of light-duty paving, which an architect will understand that definition.
And did you include, I'm sorry, the tax?
Yes.
Okay. I think, yeah, I think we should do two motions, too. I'm sorry to interrupt, but I just thought about it. Well, for that and then for the rest of the variances. Could that work for everyone? So do we have a second?
Wait, the one on the...
Why can't we include all one?
Yeah.
Okay, well, we're just going to make very long, okay.
Approving the variance with the exception of the driveway.
Okay.
I don't need to interrupt, but you probably should put your reasoning in there about the tree and...
Okay. Can we make a, just make a note of that in the variance? Or does that have to be documented within a motion?
Well, it should be documented, the reason it should be documented is so someone doesn't come along and say, why did you do this?
Okay.
This gives, this gives everybody who looks at this decision, the reason why you were doing it, because you were protecting it.
Well, because of the location of that tree.
Light-duty paving and just add the tree because of the tree.
The tree.
And then we can be more specific on the variance request, so...
It actually would seem like an application that we ought to have a section in there that's for variance notes, as to what the board, why we might, may or may not have ruled on something.
Okay, and then you want to add the living space less than, I mean, up, less than 2,000 square feet horizontal?
Well, actually, it needs to be living space less than 1,500.
1,500 or above, right?
Okay, and then horizontal hardy plank siding, you want that in there?
Yep.
And enter property off of Pecan.
Correct.
Is there a second?
My second.
All in favor? Motion passes.
One question I might have is, we haven't heard from Alan, and he's got a good input into the...
When this first came up with the Architect Committee and with the board, I made a statement that aesthetically it's the best solution there is for both Oak Lane and from Con Lane, because it makes a use out of a very small area in a very good way. So I've always thought that was the best option.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson.
Item number two, approval of the meter for the, consider approval for the meter for the golf course irrigation.
Just to give us, explain the situation with that, first time on record.
Well, I have a question for, is he here?
He's back there.
Hey, Randy, do you want to come up? He's like, no.
But I will.
What were you going to say?
No, go ahead, go ahead.
I was going to ask, we have these two bids for the meters. One of them doesn't show, the Ferguson one, is that the name? Doesn't show a warranty. Do you know anything about that?
Actually, Kuku's here, he took the bids.
It's the Ferguson one, and the other one shows the warranty.
Do you know, both of them, only have, you know, about 10 years or so, one to them. We probably have to get to the manufacturer, because they have to build it first. So once, once you get purchased, then it gets built.
The bid that he took from Ferguson is almost the exact meter that's there. If you go with the magnetic recorder meter, then that meter has to have like nine-foot of expansion for the flow, for the magnetic recorder to read it. So we suggest that you probably go with the Ferguson meter. I think it's a little cheaper and I think it's going to be a lot easier to install.
Okay.
$6,345.
I did not take the bids, Kuku took the bids. Actually, he did that out of courtesy, I mean...
Yes.
Time frame?
What, how fast?
Two weeks, maybe. And then, we're not really concerned, we just want y'all to say, you know, hey, we're going to fix it, that's fine. If you say you're going to fix it, we'll turn the dang pump back on. We're required by our permit to calibrate that meter every year and required to keep track of how many gallons of water are going out to the golf course. So without that meter functioning, we can't calibrate it, and the only way for us to know how many gallons of water are going to the golf course is if it's zero. So until we get some kind of, what we're going to do about this meter.
And you, and you guys will go back to us with a warranty, a fee for a warranty?
I'm not so sure there'll be an extra fee for a warranty. I think if you purchase the meter, probably automatically comes with a warranty.
It'll come with it.
I'm sure.
Randy, if we prove this today, Randy?
Yes, sir.
If we prove this today, you'll go turn on the water this morning?
Yes. We just want something that, um, either a motion by this board or some kind of purchase order or something that says you're going to, you're going to fix it so we can get it calibrated and we start recording what's being pumped.
And you all are going to help with the installation, is that correct?
Yes, we'll help, sure. We have to break it down to see what the problem was in the first place.
Okay.
Now, once it's installed, do you all maintain it or we maintain it?
We, we have it calibrated every year, so technically, yeah, we're responsible for making sure it's calibrated and making sure it's functioning.
Any other questions?
No.
No?
Thank you.
You got one more question?
I'll make a motion. I make a motion that we approve the bid from Ferguson for the amount, for the amount of $6,345.25, and that it be installed as soon as possible, as soon as Matt is able to obtain the parts or whatever is needed. Randy, you mentioned two weeks, correct?
I think that's what you did, that's two weeks. He said about 15 days.
Will it be ordered today?
From the moment, from the moment of purchase, okay? So it's not of, if you guys decide today that y'all make a motion that you guys are going to purchase it, then it doesn't start until you guys actually make the purchase.
Got you.
Now, another thing that you guys need to understand is that this is tax-free, because we're tax-exempt. So that's not necessarily when you call it in, you guys will be charged tax on it.
Got you.
So they might change a little bit.
So then, for clarification, Mr. Peterson needs to write your check for $6,300 today.
Well, no.
Write Ferguson's check.
Write Ferguson's.
Ferguson's the check, but y'all...
You go in and then they'll, they'll take care of you. The salesman is on there.
Okay.
All the information is on there, they do know about it, and all they have to do is make the call and make the purchase, and then we're good to go.
So you're saying we will be taxed for the purchase, which y'all wouldn't be, but we're going to buy it and y'all are not, and we reimburse y'all?
We, we are, we are not going to make the purchase. You guys are going to...
So in other words, we lose the tax?
Yeah. Yes.
Why would y'all make the purchase and we reimburse y'all?
Uh, no.
Our budget doesn't like that.
Yeah, it's, it's...
We had to do that for the city of Hartford every once in a while, because they didn't have an account, and we would buy parts for Spofford and during our body, our aunt would come back and she'd be really frowny on there.
Randy, you can't help us out with that? We gave you the check for $6,300 today?
I'll probably have to get approval from my board to see how, I'm not so sure I can make that call.
So it's 6,345 with tax?
Without tax.
Without tax?
Yeah, that's without the tax. There's a sales rep and a number on that invoice, I'm sure you called, give them that invoice, they're instant...
To number up to about 7, up to about 7,000.
We're up to about the same as the other one. Yeah.
But he made, will you try it, Randy, anyway?
Yes, I'll make the...
Well, we'll wait to hear from you then.
Well, I, we need to purchase, purchase it regardless.
Okay, so up to 7,000?
We, we're voting to do it, they will turn the water on.
Yeah, I think the most important is to get the water turned on, not 700 dollars. You know, not even that much, 500 dollars, so.
So, okay, the motion now is to purchase the meter and approve up, up to $7,000 for Fort Clark to pay to the Ferguson Company for the meter.
Do you have a second?
Second motion.
All in favor? Motion passes.
I have a question, not for you guys, but I'm, I'm still learning. My father said, ask questions and... How long does a meter need to go?
Yes, for a meter.
Right. How long does a meter last?
This one lasts to 28 years.
Well, that's great.
No, I mean, yeah, I mean, I understand, I understand the backflip preventer fails and I understand the fluoridator fails and I understand the electric panel fails, but everything's failing at the same time. Some of it, lack of maintenance, but some of it, just over time. But when you get 28 years out of a meter and I'm standing there telling you, you're going to get all the same out of the next meter, I don't see what the problem is approaching.
You'll be dead by the same time.
My name, my name, my name. Well, that is the end of our agenda, so we are going to... Oh, for what? Well, since it's special, huh? So, um, we are going to adjourn to executive session and then we'll reconvene after we're done. If there is, and, and if there's any votes, we'll be done then. And it is...
Thank you.
9:32.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you all.